The July 11th, 2016 Latrobe City Council Meeting. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask for a moment of silence to honor and remember our good friend, Mr. Dodo Canterna. At this time, I'd ask the Canterna family to please come up here and the council members are going to come down so we can present a proclamation to you. Proclamation honoring Olin Dodo Canterna. Whereas, Olin Dodo Canterna, one of our treasured assets, departed this world for a better place on June 17th, 2016. And whereas, this proud American began his public service by enlisting in the Army Air Corps during World War II. And whereas, Dodo thereafter gave his talents throughout his lifetime to many facets of public service, including being a member and president of the Greater Latrobe School District Board of Education, a member and president of the Latrobe Borough Council, mayor of the Borough of Latrobe, and chairman of the Westmoreland County Airport Authority. And whereas, in addition to his involvement in public service, Dodo was a highly recognized figure in Western Pennsylvania sports. He began by playing basketball, baseball, and football at Freeport High School and later played basketball and baseball at Pitt. For a brief period of time, he played minor league baseball in the Boston Red Sox farm system. He coached the St. Vincent's men's basketball team and was also its athletic director. Dodo related well with players on the American Legion and Little League baseball teams whom he also coached. Dodo Canterna was inducted into numerous Western Pennsylvania sports halls of fame. And whereas, Dodo also found the time to share his talents with many civic and fraternal organizations in Latrobe. And lastly, to be husband to his wife of almost 63 years, Shirley Anne, and father to seven children. Now therefore, the mayor, on behalf of city council and the citizens of Latrobe, hereby extend our thanks and gratitude to this remarkable public servant. We share in the loss, both private and public, of this unique, caring, and dedicated individual. According to the American writer Walter Lippman, "Leaders are the custodians of our ideals, of the beliefs we cherish, of our permanent hopes, and of the faith which makes a nation of a mere aggregation of individuals." We could not ask for any better custodian of these ideals, beliefs, and hopes than Olin Dodo Canterna. This proclamation is issued under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this 11th day of July 2016. May I have approval of the minutes from the June 13th, 2016 meeting? May I? Yeah, just wing it.
I move that the minutes from the last meeting be in the room.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have approval of the fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of June 2016?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Murka. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Baldmarry. Any questions or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Under committee reports, finance committee, we have nothing right now, right Wayne?
No, nothing.
Public safety and public works, stuff, you're the only one there. Nothing right now?
Nothing right now.
We did, where are we, under by the truck?
It's on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Personnel committee, check, nothing?
Nothing.
I'm sorry, what?
Just real quick.
Would I skip? Oh, I did, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I skipped citizens' requests by mistake. Anyone out in the audience have anything they'd like to discuss related to items that are on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Defense committee, Josh, anything?
We did have a meeting. What's going on? Sorry, Jerry.
That's okay.
We had a meeting about the Christmas item. Probably going well, different ideas being thrown around.
Anything else to add?
We had a meeting with the banana split, which we have every month and it's going along pretty well. It'll be there before you know it.
Yeah, summer's almost half over. Parking committee, anything yet? On the parking committee?
We did have a meeting, Madam Mayor, with some, I think Jerry, I was there, Jerry and Mary was there, and trying to get them to move forward to sell that piece of parking lot up there and now it's back in the hands of the parking board.
And the student showcase committee, I don't know if we've done anything yet.
Julie and I talked, she is going to call the superintendent again in July.
Okay, great. Thank you. Department of Authority reports, I think you're, you get the minutes from parking director, are you in our faculty?
No, they usually call us up.
Okay, well, they were, we had a meeting.
I don't get them at the time.
We're beginning like a month after our meeting.
Yeah, well, they have their meeting on the third Thursday of every month.
You know, theirs works the same on ours, yeah.
Yeah, they have to own it, yeah. I think it's 4:30. The third Thursday of every month at 4:30.
So why don't I get them off of the email?
Department reports, public works, Mike?
Yes, just one thing to report. We hired a new member for the public works department today, so he'll start next Monday, the 18th, so, you know, we're excited for that, so that's a big help.
There you go.
That'll be all, Madam Mayor.
Chief, moving on.
I have a few things to report. We've been very busy, actually starting with the airshow. Several of our officers worked through the Westmoreland County Task Force for security at the airshow. We also had a couple roundups in that time in different jurisdictions. We had our first DUI checkpoint in town. We had a representative from Pendot there and she was very happy with the way it went. It was the week before the Fourth, it was a five-hour checkpoint on Depot Street. Also, I want to say how the Fourth went very well this year. No real problems. Parade went off real well. Also, we had a drug checkpoint prior to Thunder in the Valley on the Cambria County, Westmoreland County line with the task force, which several of our officers were involved with. So we've been very busy since, really since the airshow. And everyone has really chipped in and did a very good job. I'd also like to thank all the other departments, the street department, you know, the ones for them putting the barricades and the cones and things out where they need to be. It'd be impossible for us to set up for the parades and the street blockages, also the EMS and the fire department also.
Thank you, chief. And needless to say, you know, we appreciate what you do and, you know, under the circumstances of what's going on in the world today, I would have had him on with silence for the officers in Dallas, but we have the Canternas here, so. But we recognize you put your lives on the lifeline for us every day and we don't say thank you nearly enough, so thank you and our whole department and all police officers for all the things you do to keep us safe. Chief Brazili?
I really have nothing to report this time.
Ms. Powell?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, I'm gonna skip back for one second because I see Skips here. Skip, do you have anything to report on the municipal authority?
All they're doing is flushing the lines out. If you notice, there's dirty water, just let the cold water run for a while. They started that last week, that's the only thing.
Hey, Zach, you're up.
First item's in the public works department. It's a resolution for the approval of the Act 537 plan revision entered into between the various municipalities. Summary of the resolution, Pendot requested after we approved and submitted our Act 537 plan update materials that there be a separate resolution authorized by all the municipalities subject to the plan detailing the schedule of events to occur for all the construction activities that were to occur as part of this revision project. So this is the schedule in here dating from July of 2016 through December of 2025. The appropriate action to take would be to make a motion to approve the resolutions read by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as read by the solicitor?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Baldmarry. May I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Any questions or discussions? Is this gonna finally put this to bed? We think.
We can only hope.
Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2016-31. Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mayor Walpert?
Yes.
Vice President?
Council will recall, the city entered into an agreement with, an oral agreement with Derry for the purposes of paving James Street and Wood Street, which certain portions of both of those streets are in by both municipalities. They approached us asking that we enter into a written agreement to that effect and review them the code provisions that we can do that as a motion. The motion would be to enter into an agreement with Derry Township for the paving of James Street and Wood Street with each municipality to pay for their proportional share of the project's expenses.
May I have a motion as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Any questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to the next item, it's Administration and Finance Department. This is an ordinance amending municipal waste disposal rates. As council will recall, we discussed the need to increase the quarterly and monthly fees for both commercial and residential rates to meet the increased costs of providing the garbage services. The quarterly residential fee for totes will be raised from 60 to 66. There'll be an increase of quarterly residential fees for bags from $45 to $51. In that for commercial fees, the monthly commercial fee for totes will be raised from $24 to $26. And that the monthly commercial fee for bags will be raised from $1650 to $1850. These rate increases would be effective for the fourth quarter of 2016 and would continue through the life of our contract with this disposal company. The appropriate action to take would be to make a motion to approve the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor? There's only three here. I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Murka. I know none of us are in favor of this, but we have no choice. No, we had to vote, sorry Jerry. Any questions or discussions?
Ms. Buck? This is ordinance 2016-6. Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Walpert?
Yes.
Vice President?
Again, Administration and Finance Department.
This is a resolution for council for the purchase and financing of 2016 Ford F-50 truck. Bids were solicited and advertised for the Latrobe Bulletin pursuant to the code provisions. The bids were opened earlier today and the lowest bid came from A&amp;H Equipment. The truck is a 2016 Ford F-50 demonstration model with a nine-foot aluminum dump bed, plow, spreader, tarping, and tailgate with a cold door. This truck is to purchase an existing truck that needs replaced. The purchase price would be $77,842 and would be financed, and the financing for the transaction cannot exceed five years. If council wishes to approve this bid and purchase, the appropriate action would be to approve the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussions?
Wait, this was a budget in line?
Yes.
Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 2016-31. Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Walpert?
Yes.
Vice President?
Two new toys in one year, Mike.
Thank you, council, thank you, Madam.
I'll save it for another one.
You're spoiled, Marcus, you're spoiled!
The last item we have on here is to approve the refunding of the general obligation bond series 2016 and purchase of general obligation bond series 2016. At this point, I'll yield the floor to bond council and to bond company.
Thank you, Zach. Tom Lynch, the bond counsel at Lynch &amp; Lynch, and Lisa Reese is here from Janie Montgomery Scott, the underwriter. And the same thing, we have a proposal from Alicia's firm. This is the bond ordinance I'm setting in front of you. And that is, you know, just the bond, the bond legislation that you have to do for these type of bond issues. But I will be very brief and then I can drone on about the bond ordinance and, you know, blaze it over your eyes as to what they are, as you know, from 2012, is that you have a situation where you're going to sell your bonds to the underwriter, they're gonna issue the bonds, and we're gonna call in your 2012 bonds, replacing those with lower interest bonds. And so to do that, you have to set up an ordinance. And the ordinance really does, for the first 10 sections, it's all about the bonds themselves, it's gonna declare the bonds as non-electoral debt, and it's gonna go into this idea that you're gonna set forth the stated interest rates and the maturities in Exhibit A. There's a bond form in Section 7, in Section 6, it authorizes back signatures to be used. And then finally, it's sections in the middle part of the ordinance, you will have funds established to carry out refunding the bond issue, and that would be your escrow deposit agreement and your clearing fund. And finally, Sections 19 through 32 are really boilerplate kind of language in which bond council needs to put in there for some of the local government unit debt act designations and some of the tax free designations for the 16 bonds. So I'm just gonna outline that. I'll come back and read to you in summary what that debt ordinance consists of, the action you're taking. But I'd like to turn it over to Alicia. She's gonna present you with a quick analysis of how much savings you're going to achieve. So remember, Alicia.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council and administration. Before you, you should see a document with our logo, Janie Montgomery Scott. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve the city as your bond underwriter on this transaction. If you could slip past the page label Table of Contents to page one, this is a summary of the bond that will be refinanced at closing. Your existing 2012 bond had a stated interest rate ranging from 1.75% out to 4.125% and an ultimate maturity of August 1st of 2031. And I can say that we did not extend the life of this bond issue, that all the savings are purely driven because of increased interest costs. I would also like to commend you. Your underlying bond rating, which is the single most important part in us selling your bonds, you were upgraded to a AA minus, which is commensable, given the economic climate of our state. So congratulations on strong fiscal management here in the city. On page two, as discussed with Wayne, we were not able to push any of the savings into your 2016 calendar year because we cannot close before your August payment. But we will make a refinancing of all the existing principal due after August 1st, which will be $3,070,000 plus your interest due between August 1st and February 1st of 2017. So to combine those two together, we needed roughly $3.1 million, and that money will be invested until February, when the bonds are called. On page three, today, we sold $3115,000 worth of bonds. That will replace the old bond and the 12s will come off your debt statement. The bond sold with a slight premium, meaning the bond investors are going to send you $71,000 and change at closing, so that you had to borrow less money. Below, the uses, the slug purchases, those are the monies we're going to invest that will redeem all the bonds and the estimated, I believe most of these are actual cost divisions potentially with the bond issue are below. And the rounding and excess proceeds, bond issues are different from bank loans, they are sold in $5,000 denominations, so that rounding will come back to the city at closing. Page four, we were able to sell almost all of the bonds today. Janie holds today about $700,000 of bonds worth in our inventory, and that's part of Janie's job. If we cannot sell all the bonds, we have obligated ourselves to hold them for you. You don't go out and raise your interest rates till they're all sold, so there are bonds available should anybody be interested. If you recall from the second page, your rates range from 1 and 3/4 out to 4 and 8. Today, your interest rates range from 1% out to 3%. The yields range from 1% out to 2 and 1/2. So that's where the bond premium came from. And you lowered your interest rate by more than a whole percentage point, so that was reason for the savings. Page five and six are Wayne's new semi-annual debt service schedule. You can see in the '17 and '18 fiscal year, your payments are significantly less than the 230-some thousand you were budgeting. So all of your savings, because there was so much savings, it's gonna fall into two fiscal years. And so the only thing I caution Wayne is that your debt service budget line item will return to normal in the 2019 fiscal year, so sort of make a plan on what you would like to do with those monies so that you're not shocked in 2019 when your bills jump back up to what they were in the past. So that's my only caution. And then on page six, again, you can see your last payment is still August 1st of 2034. We did not extend the life of the bond issue. And drumroll, I apologize for all the details. Page seven and eight, this is where all the savings is. You will recognize a little over $158,000 in your '17 budget and $144,000 and change in your '18 budget. And then you'll see positives and minuses above and under $5,000, and that's due to bond rounding, you cannot make your payment exactly as it says. So when you add those all together, on page eight, the total annual savings to the city is just under $300,000 at $298,962.62. So hopefully that is very good news. On page nine, just to give you a moratorium, in the second block of information, the all-in TIC, which is true interest cost, which includes fees and interest, you lowered your borrowing rate to a 2.52%. And the last line item savings of refunded bonds, in our business, we have a benchmark of 2% of a minimum savings, and you have eclipsed over 9%. So this is a very highly economical refinancing standard. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions? You can come and see us anytime.
I would love to. Like I said, I'm very happy to work for the city and thank you for the opportunity. A lot went very well today because of your sound management and just because the bond issue will close, we are always here to help you with anything you need. So thank you again.
And then if we could just have the ordinance number that's assigned, you would just take up the debt ordinance as assigned, and we would need a roll call vote on the ordinance, which would sell your bonds to Alicia's firm. The settlement is scheduled for August 10th. At that point, we'll have the settlement settled.
So may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as outlined by these folks?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Wayne, Zach, any comments?
Good deal. I mean, it's just been smooth and it's good savings for the city.
Yeah, we're confident, we've reviewed the paperwork, we're confident in the paperwork and that it will fly through the local government unit debt act requirements as well.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2016-7. Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Murka?
Yes.
Mayor Walpert?
Yes.
Vice President?
Thank you. Any else? Okay, unfinished business, anything? How about new business? July's always, summer's always such a quiet time. Any citizens' request comments? Yes, Mr. Baldmarry?
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I know none of us are in favor of this, but we have no choice. No, we had to vote, sorry Jerry. Any questions or discussions?
Ms. Buck? This is ordinance 2016-6. Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Merle? Yes.
Four yes.
Again, in the Administration and Finance Department, this is a resolution for council for the purchase and financing of 2016 Ford F-550 truck. Bids were solicited and advertised for Latrobe Bulletin pursuant to the code provisions. The bids were opened earlier today, and the lowest bid came from A&amp;H Equipment. The truck is a 2016 Ford F-550 demonstration model with a nine-foot aluminum dump bed, plow, spreader, tarping, and tailgate with a cold door. This truck is to purchase, an existing truck that needs replaced. The purchase price would be $77,842 and would be financed, and the financing for the transaction cannot exceed five years. If council wishes to approve this bid and purchase, the appropriate action would be to approve the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Wayne, this was a budget in line?
Yes.
Ms. Buck? This is Resolution 2016-31. Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
That is four yes.
Two new toys in one ear, Mike.
Thank you, counsel, thank you mayor.
I was hoping for another one.
You're spoiled, Parkers, you're spoiled!
The last item we have on here is to approve the refunding of a general obligation bond Series 2016 and purchase of general obligation bond Series 2016. At this point, I'll yield the floor to bond council and the bond company.
Thank you, thank you Zach. Tom Lynch, the bond counsel at Lynch &amp; Lynch, and Lisa Reese is here from Janie Montgomery, Scott, the underwriter. And the same thing, we have a proposal from Alicia's firm. This is the bond ordinance I'm setting in front of you. It has, you know, just the bond, the bond legislation that you have to do for these type of bond issues. But I will be very brief, and then I could drone on about the bond ordinance and, you know, blaze it over your eyes as to what they are, as you know, from 2012, is that you have a situation where you're going to sell your bonds to the underwriter, they're going to issue the bonds, and we're going to call in your 2012 bonds, replacing those with lower interest bonds. And so to do that, you have to set up an ordinance, and the ordinance really does, for the first 10 sections, it's all about the bonds themselves, it's going to declare the bonds as non-electoral debt, and it's going to go into this idea that you're going to set forth the stated interest rates and the maturities in Exhibit A. There's a bond form in Section 7, I mean, Section 6, that authorizes back signatures to be used. And then finally, it's sections, in the middle part of the ordinance, you will have funds established to carry out refunding the bond issue, and that would be your escrow deposit agreement and your clearing fund. And finally, Sections 19 through 32 are a really boilerplate kind of language, which bond counsel needs to put in there for some of the local government unit debt act designations and some of the tax rate designations for the 16 bonds. So I'm just going to outline that. I'll come back and read to you in summary what that debt ordinance consists of, the action you're taking. But I'd like to turn it over to Alicia. She's going to present you with a quick analysis of how much savings you're going to achieve. So remember, Alicia.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council and administration. Before you, you should see a document with our logo, Janie Montgomery, Scott. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve the city as your bond underwriter on this transaction. If you could flip past the page label Table of Contents to Page 1. This is a summary of the bond that will be refinanced at closing. Your existing 2012 bond had a stated interest rate ranging from 1.75% out to 4.125% and an ultimate maturity of August 1st of 2031. And I can say that we did not extend the life of this bond issue, that all the savings are purely driven because of increased interest costs. I would also like to commend you, your underlying bond rating, which is the single most important part in us selling your bonds, you were upgraded to AA minus, which is commensable, given the economic climate of our state. So congratulations on strong fiscal management here in the city. On Page 2, as discussed with Wayne, we were not able to push any of the savings into your 2016 calendar year because we cannot close before your August payment. But we will make a refinancing of all the existing principal due after August 1st, which will be $3,070,000 plus your interest due between August 1st and February 1st of 2017. So combine those two together, we needed roughly $3.1 million, and that money will be invested until February when the bonds are closed. On Page 3, today, we sold $3,150,000 worth of bonds. That will replace the old bonds, and the 12s will come off your debt statement. The bond sold at a slight premium, meaning the bond investors are going to send you $71,000 and change at closing, so that you've had to borrow less money. Below the uses, the club purchases, those are the monies we're going to invest that will redeem all the bonds, and the estimated, I believe most of these are actual cost of issuance, potentially with the bond issue, are below. And the rounding and excess proceeds, bond issues are different from bank loans, they are sold in $5,000 denominations, so that rounding will come back to the city at closing. Page 4, we were able to sell almost all of the bonds today. Janie holds today about $700,000 of bonds worth in our inventory, and that's part of Janie's job, if we cannot sell all the bonds, we have obligated ourselves to hold them for you. We don't go out and raise your interest rates till they're all sold, so there are bonds available should anybody be interested. If you recall from the second page, your rates range from 1 3/4 out to 4 8. Today, your interest rates range from 1% out to 3%. The yields range from 1% out to 2 1/2. So that's where the bond premiums are aimed from. And you lowered your interest rates by more than a whole percentage point, so that was reason for the savings. Page 5 and 6 are Wayne's new semi-annual debt service schedule. You can see in the '17 and '18 fiscal year, your payments are significantly less than the $230,000 you were budgeting. So all of your savings, because there was so much savings, is going to fall into two fiscal years. And so the only thing I caution Wayne is that your debt service budget line item will return to normal in the 2019 fiscal year. So sort of make a plan on what you would like to do with those monies, so that you're not shocked in 2019 when your bills jump back up to what they were in the past. So that's my only caution. And then on Page 6, again, you can see your last payment is still August 1st of 2034. We did not extend the life of the bond issue. And grammar roll, I apologize for all the details. Page 7 and 8, this is where all the savings is. You will recognize a little over $158,000 in your '17 budget and $144,000 and change in your '18 budget. And then you'll see positives and minuses, above and under $5,000, and that's due to bond rounding, we cannot make your payment exactly the same. So when you add those all together, on Page 8, the total annual savings to the city is just under $300,000 at $298,966.62. So hopefully that is very good news. On Page 9, just to give you a barometer, in the second block of information, the all-in TIC, which is true interest cost, which includes fees and interest, you lowered your borrowing rate to a 2.52%. And the last line item savings, the refunded bonds, in our business, we have a benchmark of 2% of a minimum savings, and you have eclipsed over 9%. So this is a very highly economical refinancing scenario.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You can come see us anytime.
I would love to. Like I said, I'm very happy to work for the city, and thank you for the opportunity. A lot went very well today because of your sound management, and just because this bond issue will close, we are always here to help you with anything you need. So thank you again.
And then if we could just have the ordinance number that's assigned, you would just take
up the debt ordinance as assigned, and we would need a roll call vote on the ordinance, which would sell your bonds to Alicia's firm. The settlement is scheduled for August 10th. At that point, we'll have the settlement scheduled.
So may I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as outlined by these folks?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Wayne, Zach, any comments?
Good deal.
I mean, it's just been smooth, and it's a good save for the city.
Yeah, we're confident, we reviewed the paperwork, we're confident in the paperwork, and that it will fly through the local government unit debt act requirements as well.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2016-7. Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Merle?
Yes.
That is four yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, unfinished business, anything? How about new business? July's always, summer's always such a quiet time. Any citizens request comments? Yes, Mr. Baldwin?
Big crowd. First of all, what I want to do is I want to compliment Mr. Taylor and his fantastic crew who came in and decked the street below my alley.
Mr. who?
Mr. Taylor.
Oh, Mr. Gray, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't know who you were talking to. First of all, Paul, can you state your name for the record and your address?
Paul J. Volkman, 1544 Ligoner Street, Latrobe, Pennsylvania, AKA Mr. Peter.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. The Public Works Department, I asked him, Mr. Gray, at the last meeting, before even coming up and approaching the subject, that we were having trouble with the cars coming down our alley, or my alley there, or going up onto the alley. The oil pans were being removed from the bottom of the cars, people were actually losing the front of their car or scraped off. One gentleman who lives beside me told me, he witnessed a driver who was going too fast, who lost both their axles speeding down that alley. Now, for over 15 years, I have been trying to get this repaired. And finally, with this fine gentleman sitting over here to my right, who came in and introduced his health and said he was heading up the Public Works Department, I decided this was my time to try again. And he came out, and he looked at it, and then it was within a week that the truck pulled up, and I talked to the men outside, and they agreed something had to be done. And they came out with their asphalt the next day and a roller, and it is fantastic. And I speak for the citizens, because as you all know, I don't drive, so it wouldn't be helping me at all. But I want to help the citizens of Latrobe not screw up their cars, okay? So that's the first issue I have. The second issue there is recently I just published a book, and I want to compliment you with the, what are my coffees?
Is it mine?
Yes, it is.
Yay, thank you.
Oh, how would I not do it?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My pleasure indeed. That's all.
Pevatory in form of versity?
Yeah, Pevatory, it's a book on poetry.
Oh, nice, thank you so much.
In form of versity from the sublime to the ridiculous.
From the sublime to the ridiculous. Thank you very much. Any other citizens' requests? Yes, sir.
Name is Paul Hout, 121 West Tacoma Avenue, Latrobe. A month ago, I expressed my concern with the proposed ordinance permitting the boarding of chickens. And this evening, when I looked at the evening paper today for Latrobe Bulletin, I see this issue is coming up to the vote at the council, August 8th, I believe it is, it's the next council meeting here in Latrobe. And I still stand my ground, and I don't think that the boarding of chickens in the city of Latrobe is in the best interest of residential property owners. Thank you.
Didn't we have something in the ordinance before? And that's, I mean, about chickens?
Yes, we did have something, we do have something in Code Chapter 58 relative to the keeping of domesticated animals, including chicks, ducks, et cetera. So this is already a permitted use, we're just trying to clarify it.
So it's not something new? It's something that they're already allowed to do according to an ordinance that was written? How long ago, do we know?
It appears 1996 is the latest.
So this practice has been permissible in the city of Latrobe?
Under the ordinance. And I think what we're trying to do is build some parameters around it, so that it doesn't get out of control. So that there's, you're only allowed a certain number, Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, a certain size?
Certain number density based upon the size of your lot. It's crafted to make sure that the chickens spend in enclosure, that best practices are maintained, it's done in a healthy manner, that there's no disease, things of that nature. It's pretty all encompassing.
So it's not, I just wanted to clarify to make sure you understand, we're not saying, we're not enacting an ordinance that's going to allow something new. Since 1996, residents of the city have been allowed to house chickens, which was news to me. And the beekeeper thing really surprised me. That's the biggest meeting we've had in a long time.
Well, still, I'll stand my ground.
I appreciate that.
I'd say, I feel it's not in the best interest of the property owners of the city, the residential property owners. I can understand that this has been permissible, but I don't think that law's written in stone. So it's going to be...
Not tomorrow.
It's going to be here twice next month, the council.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, chief?
I just want to commend Wayne and with the help from Zach in the refinancing of the bonds. I think that is just a phenomenal job he did on that, and I'm really proud to be an employee here when I have leadership like that.
Thank you, chief. I echo, I think we all echo his comments. You don't see something like that happening every day, and I appreciate, we all appreciate your foresight and your hard work in doing the work needed to do that and recognizing that it was something that we could take advantage of. I think we all seem proud of the fact that, you know, we got a rating increase, and once again, you know, that's attributable to, you know, Wayne and I go round and round because he's a bean counter, and I'm so glad.
It's a joint effort, I mean, it's a step.
And Barb as well.
Sure.
Barb runs a tight ship.
Oh, yeah.
So that's why, that's why very rarely do you hear the answer to the question, is there anything outside of budget?
We have made spirited the special.
I bet, I know. So thank you for...
Does that mean we can pave more streets next year? Ah, we can tire ten more.
I've been wanting for a long time to try to start an account and maybe put a little bit of money in it every year, so that we can start finding a way to address some alleys. If there was, I don't know if it's possible, but if we can, but I think we all would agree, if there's one complaint that city residents have, it's the alleys. And I know, I know, believe me, I know.
We're on like a 20-year cycle for a main road.
I know, I know, I know.
I appreciate what you're saying, it's just, it's tough.
I know.
Come up with money.
Madam Mayor, there's also gravel available, I know that if you ask the Public Works will come for gravel in the halls.
Yeah.
It's not like we totally say nothing to the alleys.
No, I know, but I think some of the problems really are the hills with the alleys, because the gravel just, it's gone immediately. If you're on a flat, like, you know, if you're on a flat place, the gravel works fine, but if you're on a hill, first rain, it washes out. So, but maybe, you know, we just keep trying, that's all that can stay. I know, there's only so much money to go around. City manager's report.
It's got Wayne's.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have some kind of stuff?
Wayne, actually, it's a 37-year plan to pave all the roads in Latrobe.
20 years was just the number I was running out.
I knew it was close.
I was on that committee for a while then, and I mapped it out, and it was 37-year plan to pave all the roads in Latrobe. And back to Zach, we also have to remember that Mr. Kelly over there was the one who told us Zach would be a good asset.
Yeah.
So Jimmy, thanks on that.
I did not lie.
Oh, sir, you did.
I did not do that.
Plus, I think you might have trained him a little bit, too. I think there was some mentoring going on there for a while. I think Zach's, Zach, you spent an entire day, or two, or more, walking around with them, did you?
Just walking around with them, probably seemed like 20 hours going through files.
No, thank you. Okay, anything else from council before we go to the city manager's report?
Just a couple of quick things. Thanks to Jerry, we have a gentleman that wants to take the tower down for free. He's taken it down for free, I know, he has to provide us insurance, of course, and they're talking about sometime in August, September they're going to. So they went from $6,000 to $2,000 for free, and I like that. So they want to reuse it.
Yeah.
I was asked about the budget, we're on track, about 50% in 50 years, so we're on track for the budget. And we have, our new employee has completed her 45th day today, she'll be coming off of probation. Sherry Henning is her name, she worked very well with both Public Works and Administration, definitely a good catch. So we're adding some new faces to replace some of the faces we've been, you know, going on, so moved on. It's good for the city to have, you know, some new faces coming in.
Mike, how's the business at the transfer station with the expanded hours?
You know what, we get approximately about six customers after the...
Between noon and 1:30?
Yes, yes. I think, you know, what would help is a little bit more advertising, getting the word out. You know, it's, I think, you know, on the other issue, it would probably help during the weekdays to stay open a little later. You know, if we can, you know, figure out a way in the future to maybe stay open a little bit later on some select days, you know, we can always try something. But the biggest problem is everyone wants to try to get there early in the morning and get everything done and go on with their day, you know, pretty much afternoon. And a lot of the customers during the weekdays, you know, they have their own construction companies, they can, you know, they can get there later, but then we close at 3 o'clock. So it's kind of a mix right now. You know, we tried it last year, I don't know what the success rate was last year on how many customers, but this year, just averaging about six customers per day after that time.
They're getting pounded in the morning, they may have less on trucks, 96 on Saturday. So they're getting pounded in the morning.
Saturday mornings?
Yes.
Wow. Well, you know what, you guys want to, you know, maybe that would be a good project for the Public Works Committee to look at, maybe doing something. But you're right, I mean, I think we need, other than the sign outside, what advertising have we done?
Just the different magazines that go out in the city, you know, different flyers. And then we put it into the garbage bill, we advertise. I think we advertised it, didn't we? Yeah. I think we did, not last time, the time before. Yeah, I think last year we advertised, I don't think we did it this time.
I mean, since it's only the, you know, what, when do we do this, April, sorry, April?
Yeah, April through September.
Yeah, we ought to be doing it. With the bill right before that, would that be January's bill?
Yeah, I think so, we should have sent that down.
Maybe April. Are they quarterly, aren't they quarterly?
February.
And then April, should be in April's bill.
April, October.
Should be in April's bill that is coming up. So, but anyway, so that's something, you know, maybe we can look at and take some recommendations from, well, that plus just the whole...
I don't know if it's...
Changing, yeah, how do we get the right people is another question we need to figure out. How do we get it to the right people? I mean, do we have flyers there, so that when somebody comes in, we can handle a flyer?
Yeah.
So they know?
Yeah, we do have the customer entrance where the hours are posted, so, you know, they do know. Now flyers, we don't have anything made up, but, you know, that would be something good to, you know, have made up to pass on. But most of the customers, they're the usual customers that come in. So it's same customers, day in, day out, contractors, so, you know, trying to...
We need to get new customers.
Yeah, outside.
Right, from further away.
Yeah, probably, yeah, the chief was just mentioning a good idea, you know, put flyers at Lowe's, you know, that would be perfect, get a lot of contractors.
That's a good idea.
You can give me some for the banana split 5K, women were grabbing a bag.
Okay.
Get people all around. Speaking of garbage, do you think we could get a list of the days, of the weeks that they're back a day? You know, like 4th of July, you don't put your garbage out till the next day that you usually do, because I see a lot of people...
That doesn't come in your mailbox, do you?
Well, maybe we shouldn't do it here.
Well, the January sets the whole holiday.
Whole year, yeah.
But I noticed a lot of people, I'm going to get out of putting garbage out. I'm just like a man for ours.
What if it gets picked up on the Tuesday afternoon, Monday holiday, leave it out there? Get to the next day.
Anything else, Wayne?
No, that's it.
Under the mayor's report, I just want to thank Chief Brazili and Chief Boomer again for all their work for the 4th of July. It was a great day, and there was a lot of people in town for the parade, unfortunately, I'm guessing that you didn't have the traffic on Tuesday that you would have on Monday, so that's, you know...
Yeah, that was probably the drawback of the main date, was most of the people had to go back to work, it wasn't the mall to the people that would have been there Monday night.
Yeah.
Kind of put a little dam on it, but everything went well.
Yeah, everything went well, Tuesday was a nice day, and the fireworks were great. And the 4th of July committee, again, once again, I was amazed when I went through that parade route, it was just packed, it was three and four people deep everywhere you went. So it's, and again, it always kills me, I got to drive down Lake Eyre Street at 8:30 the night before and see all the empty chairs lining the street. It just cracks me up every year.
It was done earlier, 6:30.
Well, I know, I just go at 8:30, and I want to see the people there, put them out before the ordinance allows them to. So we've got a lot more things coming up this summer, obviously, you know, the banana split festival at the end of August, and I'm sure there's going to be some stuff in between. So keep your eye out to the Latrobe Bulletin and the trip and what's going on. And once again, to the staff of the city of Latrobe, thank you for all that you do. We are, lucky to live in a town like that. So if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Baldwin, may I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, meeting adjourned.